Good morning. Today is Thursday, January 28, 2021, and we are here for a work session. As always, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Frank, can you please take the lead?
I would love to. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Frank. We just have one announcement today. As you likely know by now, the distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine is underway across the United States and in New York. Residents may call 833-697-4829 or visit our town website for further information. As of yesterday, the governor announced that we are out of the yellow zone, so we will be returning back to the prior governor's mandate. Restaurants can now occupy at 50% capacity. All right, moving forward, today's first discussion item is Mr. Jack Orbin, who is with the Independent Audit Committee of Riverhead. He's here today to discuss the results of their recent audit of the Highway Department. Jack, can you come forward? So are we going to join people in? Is anyone going to join us in through Zoom?
There are four that should be on the phone.
Okay, so Chip, do we have the participants?
They are.
Okay, so we have two of four?
Four.
You can have us... Yes, so far we have two up on the screen, so we're just waiting for the other two. Are they together?
No, they're separate.
They're separate, okay.
As far as I know, yes.
Mr. Orbin, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jack.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Back, don't take it personal.
Sit here.
Sure.
Yes.
Right ahead.
How are you?
Good, how are you, Ms. Kent?
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Mr. Orbin, do you have an order of which these speakers would like to speak in, or do you want to make an introduction and then have?
I'd prefer to make an introduction if that's all right.
Absolutely.
First of all, I'm delighted to see that we've upgraded the name tags of the council people, and the supervisor looks much better. Congratulations. Some of you I do not know, or if I do know you, I apologize that we may have met in the past.
Kenneth Rockford, I'm the new guy.
The new guy.
I'm the old new guy, Frank.
In any event, I think it would be helpful to just kind of review briefly how the Independent Audit Committee came into being and what our general charge is in supporting the town. It was back around, I believe, 2012, maybe late 2011, when then-supervisor Walter was talking to me about the need to have some independent oversight of town departments. Where I came from in White Plains, we were very vigorous at that sort of thing. I agreed with him, and ultimately, that led to the Town Council passing a resolution, which I'd urge you to read. It's three pages long. It's rather broad, and it gives the Independent Audit Committee, I think, the boldness necessary to get the job done. We have audited several departments since we came into being, including among them the municipal garage, interestingly, the Justice Court, the Rec Department, and others. I'd like to think that the work we have done has been fair, has been complete. If you review it after the fact, I'd like to think it's professionally produced by people that do not have any sort of obvious agenda, including me. That's what I'd like to think. The audit that we're going to discuss today is a little unusual, but before I get into it, I wanted to introduce the people. Can't see behind me. Is that the only one that's on the phone right at the moment?
There are four, but they don't have the video on.
Got it. All right, well, there are two members of my committee. Joel Hockett is one. His name is up there, and Ernie Anderson. They have been on the committee for two or three years. The population of the committee has shifted over time as people have come and gone, but this is our current committee. The other person on the upper left is Charlene Cagle. She runs East End Accounting, probably known to some of you. She's a serious expert on municipal finance and municipal government. The resolution thankfully provided that this committee could use an outside accounting firm to help us get our work done, and Ms. Cagle and her team have done a great job. And the other is Ron Colito, her sidekick, who actually does most of the hard work. So they make up our team. I'd like to point out that this is a voluntary committee. We are not paid for what we do. Any expenses we incur, we pay them ourselves, with the exception of every elaborate Christmas party we hold for ourselves. That's not true.
Is it on the books?
It's not my book. No, we don't do that. But I think it's important for you to know that we are volunteers. As a consequence, you have to work around people's schedule and their points of view, for that matter. So let me get to the Highway Department. I'm glad Mr. Woodson is here. This has been an unusual audit, principally because the Highway Superintendent is elected by the people. The other departments that we have audited have been appointed by this board or in some fashion or other came into being. When I first went to see Mr. Woodson, I had not met him before. I knew a little bit about him from the paper. We sat down in his office, and instinctively, and I like my instincts, I found him a very personable guy. "Hi, Jack. How are you? How's everything? Nice of you to come visit me." We got to chatting, and I asked him directly, if you recall, who he thought his boss was. And he looked at me and he said, "That's a good question. My bosses are the citizens of this town. He's elected by them." I said, "All right, fine. Who else would be your boss?" He mentioned the Suffolk County Highway Department, and at the tail end, some references were made to our own municipal government, namely you folks. It was interesting to me that he said that because I asked him then, if he recalls, what would this first cadre of people that are your bosses do if they found out you were misbehaving somehow? He said, "Well, they would vote me out of office." But I said, "How would they know if you're misbehaving?" There was no really good answer to that, except that if he kept the roads well and plowed in the wintertime, that they'd say he's doing a good job. But that's not the only part of his job. He is an integral part of this town, and he does come under the guidance of various policies and procedures that the town has. And I think he recognizes that. But in summary, I would say to you that there are a number of instances, more than you might expect, where the Highway Department is not in compliance with the procurement procedures of this town. Now, I'm giving you a preliminary report of what we have done in accommodation principally to the town supervisor. We have been at this a long time. I'm not making it up as an excuse. I'm not an excuse guy. But in order to conduct this audit, we've had to fight COVID-19. We've had to fight the fact that the Highway Department wasn't available at certain times. Our own schedules were difficult to accommodate. It's been a long time, longer than we usually take to get these things done. The supervisor was anxious to have some commentary on what's been going on, and I accommodated by saying I would come here today with the team and we would discuss it. But there's a very important missing element of what you're about to hear. Our normal routine is to meet as a committee. We put together a very formal draft audit plan. As a team, we go to visit the department head. We go over the audit with the department head, which includes requests for certain documents that we will need and access to the files. We then go about our audit. We come back. We meet as a team. We go over a draft of our audit, put it to bed, and then we take it back to the department head, and we go over the specific items that we have put in the report and give the department head a chance to tell us, gee, you really didn't understand what's going on here. This was a special circumstance, or whatever it might be. There are reasons why certain things happen. That has not taken place. We have not gone back to the Highway Superintendent to discuss this report, but we're here because I wanted to be accommodative. As a courtesy to the Highway Department, I called Mr. Woodson the other day and told him that we were coming to this meeting. And I told him the conclusions that we have reached were that there were an unusual number of instances where they were dotting compliance. I didn't ask him to comment about it. I wanted him to know that. I also told him one other thing, and he responded. As part of this audit, we went to see one of the resources that the Highway Department uses, namely Suffolk Brake in Bohemia. We talked to them about their relationship with the town, how they accommodate the town's interest in acquiring things, and actually learned a lot. But as part of it, the person we were interviewing told us that they invite Mr. Woodson to golf outings. Now, I don't know how many, but it was brought up. I mentioned this to the Highway Department Superintendent to tell him that I had planned to let you know that we were told this by Suffolk Brake. I really forget what his response was, but I think it was, "There are very few and far between, and most of the time I pay my own way." The reason I mention it to you is this town has an ethics department, and they require the town officers that they file a financial report, I believe. I've never seen one, I guess annually. We don't have access to those reports, but it would probably be an important thing for this town board to do, to take a look at it and see if... And by the way, let me ask you. Do you examine the financial records that the Essex Board Team collects?
They're filed, and they're actually foilable, and they're reviewable.
No, I know they're filed, but do you actually look at them?
The town clerk has them. Anytime we have reviewed them from time to time when it's necessary.
Is that really an answer to that?
They're available, and there has been times that we have looked at them. We don't review them as a board fully. It's not a process that we follow here in Town Hall, and if we have to file, if we have to review them yearly, we will. We're here to...
Well, I'm not here to tell you how to do your job. I'm just more curious as to if someone files a financial report with the town. Is it filed with the Ethics Board? Is that who it's filed with?
It's filed with...
Robert Kozakovich is going to respond to that.
The way it's done, the annual disclosure is filed with the town clerk. It's done in duplicate. The Ethics Board then looks at each and every disclosure that's filed to determine whether it's complete, whether there's any issues that require them to follow up with those individuals who file those annual disclosures, and that is done annually, and that's done every year.
So the Ethics Board reviews each of those, Robert?
Yes, yes.
And if they were to find something that they were curious about, who would they talk to about?
They would call the person who filed that disclosure.
So it's a matter of...
They may call them in. They certainly will investigate it.
Okay, fine. But it's a matter between the Ethics Board and the individual employee of the town, not the Town Council?
The Town Council is not part of that process now.
Okay, so we'll drop out at this point. This is a matter between the Ethics Board and the Highway Superintendent. So in any event, the plan was now to let you hear about two instances to back up the fact that our conclusions are there are just too many instances in the Highway Department where they're not accommodating the procurement policy of this town. And I might say one other thing. The citizens that the Highway Department refers to who elect him and to whom he feels responsible are the same exact citizens that vote for you, each of you. I presume they are. Most of them are. And I think the vote is different. The vote for the Highway Superintendent is to, I guess, affirm that the roads are being maintained and plowed in the wintertime. The vote for each of you is different in this sense, at least my vote, and I think many others. We expect the Town Council to run the town efficiently and effectively. Your job is to represent our interests, to be sure that the taxes that we're paying are sensibly used. And this is where I think there can be an accommodation between the Highway Superintendent's view of his boss and yours. There does need to be an improvement in the relationship between that department and this Town Council, in our opinion. The way to accommodate it is to convince the Highway Department that the same people that he reports to are the people that voted for you, and therefore, he has a legitimate obligation to attempt to accommodate the procurement policy of this town. Now, whether or not he agrees with that is something you can take up with him. But we keep looking for opportunities, as we did when we did the audit of the ambulance corps, to bring this Town Council and that department together as best we can. We're not trying to drive a wedge between... Go ahead, Ms. Kent.
When you're ready, I have a question.
Oh, anytime, I'm sorry.
Just to go back before we move on and hear the rest, can you tell me specifically why the steps were left out, where you go back and forth with where you would have gone back to the highway and gone over the report and then come back, and then, as you said, and gone back again?
Absolutely.
Can you tell me specifically why that was left out?
Well, it hasn't been avoided. It's simply been delayed, all right? And here's the answer to your question. This audit has taken a long time. I know that this town board and others are interested in what we're doing. So because it has taken such a long time, my discussions with the supervisor, I agreed as the chairman of the committee to come here and present a preliminary report, preliminary report. Now, that's why... So we've skipped the step of going back to Mr. Woodson. In order to at least be forthright with him, and as a courtesy, I called him to tell him that we would be here today, and he's here to hear everything that we said. So there's no mystery to what's going on.
Should we say that you didn't skip the step? You just haven't completed the process?
After this meeting, we will meet as a committee and do what we always do: finalize our audit findings in a plan. We'll take them to the Highway Superintendent. We'll go over them point by point, and we'll give him or anyone else a chance to say, "You really didn't understand what was going on here. There was a special circum..." or whatever it might be. Once that's done, we will meet again as a team, put the report together, and normally, we would come and present that report to the council, but in this case, we'll just deliver it to you unless you'd like us to come back.
Now, the reason that also prompted you here today is that usually two audits are completed in one year.
Pardon me?
Usually two audits are completed in one year, and...
That's not true.
It's not?
No.
In the past?
Well, we've been in business since 2012.
Okay.
That would mean we would have done 16 audits. I was a math major. We've nowhere near 16 audits.
Right.
We do not have a schedule, Madam Supervisor. What we do is, we try to react to the mood of the moment, if you will.
Got it.
When we audited the Justice Department, one of the really unusual audits, there was a situation that was developing between the town and the Justice Department that was quite sensitive relative to the state of New York.
Okay.
We felt that we could help solve that problem by going in there and doing an audit.
Okay.
So we chose to go in and do it, but we don't have a schedule that we have... I don't know where that came from, that we'll do two a year?
No.
We don't have enough time to complete this audit in one year.
So we wanted to... So since... I just want to be clear. Since 2012, you've done an audit a year, approximately?
That's a fair number. I don't know precisely, but yes.
It's okay.
Eight. That would mean eight.
Okay. And we know that COVID delayed, as you mentioned earlier, COVID delayed the audit, and we are here to make whatever issues or concerns come up, to make them more fluid, address them, and work together. And, you know, that's the purpose, and that's why you're here. Moving forward, are we going to hear... Do you want to continue?
Well, my plan was, if you think...
And I still had another question.
Go ahead, Ms. Kent. Did I answer your question? No?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, help me out.
First of all, let me thank you for your work. I'm always appreciative of your work in the entire group, so let me start by saying that. And I'm always in favor of transparency, but I'm wondering if it's ever been done this way before, where you did a preliminary report, if that has ever been done before? That's my first question. And my second question is, did you approach the town and ask to do a preliminary report, or were you approached to do a preliminary report?
Well, let me answer the first question first, which was...
Has this ever been done in this manner before?
To answer that question, no. This is the first time we've presented a preliminary report.
And were you... Did you approach the supervisor and ask to do it this way, or did she approach you?
I think that may be great. I think in discussions with the supervisor, and as I mentioned earlier, there seemed to be developing a mood of... People knew that we were auditing the Highway Department, not just you, but others in the community. There seemed to be developing, I have no firm evidence of this, but just anecdotally, that there was an interest in what was being done. We were not moving along fast enough to be able to end this thing by this meeting. So in order to present something, we decided to come here and present a preliminary report.
At his request, not the supervisor's request?
No one asked me to do that.
Let's make that clear.
We didn't volunteer to do it. It emerged from the discussions with the supervisor and myself and the committee. You look perplexed. I'm sorry. I'm not answering your question.
Jack, I would almost request that you table this until it's completed and do the normal process because...
Yeah, I agree. I think Tim...
I think some stuff could come up tainting the Highway Superintendent that really shouldn't if he could have his opportunity to explain what it was. I mean, I think it should be consistent and kept the same way we've done all of them in the past.
Well, that's entirely up to you. We serve at the pleasure of this town board.
And I got to say, too, Catherine's right. We appreciate the time that you guys put into this.
That's fine. We're here to try to be helpful.
Right.
We're not anxious to drive wedges between any department. So if you feel it's better that we complete the work we do, that we go see the Highway Superintendent, sit down with him and discuss it, that's exactly what we'll do.
I think that's only fair because that's the way it should be done, and he may have, like you said, and, you know, there may be a reason or a special circumstance for some of the things that you've come up with. And I would rather he had the chance to go over that with you before you make your presentation.
And I thank you for saying that, Tim. I'm in complete agreement. You know, I'm just... I'm kind of stunned that we're moving forward in this way. It doesn't... It just doesn't... I mean, of course, we like transparency, but it doesn't seem fair to the Highway Department that there wasn't that back and forth, and maybe things could have been explained. So I'm in agreement.
Well, we'll accommodate whatever you want. In terms of fairness, I'd like to... One of our goals is to be fair. We're not a gotcha organization. We're not here to get anybody in any kind of situation that's uncomfortable. So... But if it's the mood of this Town Council that we do it the old way, we'll do it the old way.
Well, let's take a vote on it. Frank, are you in agreement? Kent, you're in agreement?
I think so.
Mr. Woodson is up, but do you have some thoughts?
Well, it's like putting a coffee before the horse.
You got to talk into the mic, Gio.
Oh.
Maybe they haven't turned it on.
He should have probably came to me first, and maybe I could explain some things to you, why I did this or why I did that, than just bring it up to the board. And now, you know, you have no answers on why I did it, and then it leaves me out there hanging to the public, like you did this wrong or you did this wrong, without any explanations on why I did certain things. The Highway Department Superintendent has a difficult job at times. He has to keep all his equipment up. There's certain times, and the board knows you need equipment. You may have to circle around or do this and that to get what you need to do your job. So I think it's only fair that I sit down with you and you bring your comments to me first, and then maybe we can cut this shorter, and then you'll understand a little bit more. One of the things, I don't know if this is your first Highway Department you've done and audited on?
Is that a question?
Yes.
Of the Highway Department? Absolutely.
So therefore, you don't really have an understanding. If this was your 20th meeting with a Highway Superintendent, I'd get it. But if this is just your first time, you don't understand, you get in the jams, or different things come up, then I think to be fair to me, you should come to me first before you come to the board.
Well, I'm quite happy to do that, but auditing is a very precise process. It's pretty black and white. If you go into a file and there's supposed to be something done and it's not done. For example, when we were auditing the Building Department, in the folder that's in file for a particular project are all kinds of requirements as to what the Building Department has to do at certain times along the way. They have to be completed. If they're not completed, we remind them about it. So I agree with you, Mr. Superintendent. We should come to you. We want to come to you. But I can tell you now that the things that we have uncovered, the facts of them, you may have responses, and we're anxious to hear them, but they're not fabricated. They are things that we discovered in the process, particularly the procurement process, that are factual. Okay. Now, one other thing. As part of this audit, we have, and I'd like to just comment on this briefly, talked to other departments in this town, namely the Legal Department and the Finance Department. They are involved in trying to coordinate with you when you're buying equipment.
Correct.
As best as we can tell, there's quite a bit of time being spent by people in those departments trying to be sure they understand what you're doing. And I guess you spend a lot of time trying to understand why they're curious about what you're doing.
Well, this all came up before that. We really never had any issues. I know we have a new purchasing officer, does things different. So therefore, over the last year and a half, two years, we'd have to adjust. As far as going off contracts, county, state, all these other things, that's... Everything was purchased under those source well. Everything was purchased the way we've always done it. So in order to be fair to me, I would rather you come to me and ask me the questions before we bring all this up.
Well, I vote for fairness. I vote for coming to you. Being here was an accommodation for, I'll call it a mood, all right? If we now have decided, and the mood is, let's go to George first and come back, we'll do exactly that.
Yeah.
I feel that the procedure that's been done all along the way should be the same procedure that's used with Mr. Woodson, and I believe that my councilmates are in agreement with me on that.
It should be finalized.
I agree with you, all right?
Thank you.
We're not here to be difficult.
No, I'm not saying that. I just think that we should move forward with the standard procedure.
Okay.
We would be interested in the final report, not, you know, one that's not, you know...
All right, well, since I'm up here in this chair...
We greatly appreciate you. Let me say, you know, the volunteer work you're doing. We're just... We'll be anxious to see the final report as opposed to the midterm.
So will I. My teammates, Joel, Ernie, Ms. Cagle, Ron, does anyone have any comments at this point as to what has happened or what you've heard?
No, no questions. All right, so we're all in agreement that Mr. Orbin, you will be back with the final report, and can you give us an idea of a timeline? Just an idea. We're not going to hold you up to it.
Briefly, I'm going to pull my mask down and smile. Briefly, I'm going to pull my mask down and smile. We will do it as rapidly as we can.
Okay.
It is very difficult to match up the schedules of the team, to talk about what we need to do before we go see Mr. Woodson. That takes time. One person has to do this, one person's away, one of our members is in Florida. I cannot really say how long that will be. We will move as rapidly as we possibly can. There is no further work that's necessary. All that's necessary now is that we sit down with Mr. Woodson and present the findings of our audit to him and have his chance to discuss whether or not we misunderstood something. I agree that it would be fairer to do that.
We appreciate your work. And as Councilman Rothwell said, we're interested in the final product, but thank you for agreeing to use the usual process. That should be what's happening.
Got it.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you for volunteering.
And thank you, everyone on the IUC.
Thank you, everybody else, too, for your hard work.
And so, we now know how we're moving forward and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Orbin.
Thank you.
I don't like what that happened to you either.
All right, moving on to our last open session item, we have the Water District Superintendent. Frank Mancini is here to discuss required filing. Frank, can you come forward?
Yes, thank you for having me here. We're, today, we're here to discuss our obligations to the New York State Health Department. We have to do a public notification about the deferral we've pursued because of the PFOS contamination at one of our wells at Plant Five. So, that information will be posted in the Riverhead News Review and it will be available on our website, as well as our plan of action to address that issue. The public should know that we have never put this water system above the, even the newest drinking water standard, and we are pursuing a lawsuit to recoup the treatment costs. The one last thing is that this morning, the Health Department called me and I had to make an amendment to our notification in that because we buy water from the Suffolk County Water Authority and they have pursued a deferral for both PFOS, PFOA, PFOS, N14 dioxane, we had to add that language to our notification. And if our customers would like, they can go to Suffolk County's website at scwa.com and check on the status of their deferral and their plan of action.
Good. That's fine. Everyone in agreement?
Yeah, this is just, this is just something that they're making you put out to, just to alert the people that we're, we haven't gone over anything. We may be getting close in some areas, but that's also going to be worked on and fixed. So, it's just a matter of, this is, this is housekeeping that they're making you do.
Yeah, it's procedural, it's New York State...
People don't have to be alarmed that their water's bad.
No.
It's not that. You know, I know your office is going to receive probably a thousand calls on this, but it just should be clear, this is just a statement that they require to be put out, but we're not in violation of anything.
You're absolutely right. We currently blend this well when it's in use. That would be an acceptable permanent solution, but we are pursuing treatment on this individual well anyway.
Okay.
Our water is safe.
It's safe to drink.
Thank you.
We have good water. Thank you so much.
And we'll continue to have good water everywhere.
That bloody ruin.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, this concludes the discussion item for today. Devin, can you please read the resolutions?
Yes.
That was, that was critical.
Does everybody have them pulled up? Are we ready?
Give me one second.
One second, Devin, please.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, we have them up?
I haven't turned it out anymore. I read over them.
Okay. So, Resolution Number One, 2021-27, authorizes sewer district employees to attend seminar. Just a quick note on this supervisor and the rest of the board. The resolution was previously tabled, you recall, so you guys will make a motion to untable it. But the amount embedded in the resolution lists the cost for the training at $1,250 for a total of $2,500. It's actually been changed this morning. They got word that it's going to be a little more expensive, so the number in the, the figure in the reso is going to be changed to reflect a total of $29,160. So, just a little under $3,000 to send the two guys to train.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Separate and apart from the resolution that you guys approved last week, authorizing two additional employees to go to a separate training. It's a separate, a separate training.
And because of the price point, they are also required to work for us for a guaranteed term.
Correct. That language is embedded in the, in the resolution.
Correct.
All right.
And I saw that right in the resolution. I'm, it says that it's March 1st through 5th and it's in Morrisville. Is it on location? It's not Zoom or...
I believe it's on location, but Superintendent obviously can give us further details on that than I have.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we just can't know what's going to happen with COVID, so wondering if they end up going to Zoom, if that is, I would think that would be less expensive.
Sure, you wouldn't have lodging and hotel fees.
I just, I'm surprised by, in March, they're still having.
I think that was the reason it was tabled originally, is because of COVID, the dates had to change.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Devin.
We may be back at this again with another date change.
Yeah, I feel like we might, because the vaccines are coming out so slow.
Okay, Resolution Number Two, authorizes town clerk to publish in post public notice to consider a local law to amend Chapter 105 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Boards, Commissions, and Councils.
So, I have one question. Frank, is this so that there are more voting members? Because I know that it used to be someone from REC and they weren't all voting members. Now, it'll be five members and they'll all be voting members?
They'll at-large, yes.
Okay.
So, there'll be five at-large members, they all have an equal vote, and right now, there's only four. So, we still needed to get another person into the seat to fill that vacancy. But, yeah, it's just, I think the process was derived years ago from probably a need, but that need no longer exists and we need to have a five-person board now, so...
So, are you looking for another member?
Yes. And there are, and I talked to Tim a little bit about this beforehand, but I think we should probably find the vacancies in some of our committees and through the supervisor's office, if you're okay with it, sort of make a press release or some kind of advertisement so that we can get people's interest to fill some of these spots.
Absolutely. And we're going to be soon announcing liaisons.
Okay.
And then you'll have the liaisons of those...
I know off the top of my head, it's open space for me. I think CAC has an opening Board of Ethics. Somebody told me there's a, there's a open seat. So, there's a number of them out there.
Right. So, once we establish the liaison, we sent out a list last week. I think Devin was going to send it out again to the, all the council members. And once you get, you're established with your liaisonships, then you can report back to us and we can collate a list. It's a great idea. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we, yeah, we got that from Devin and I was hoping that we could kind of talk together. And I think that's a great idea. I've actually talked about that before. I'm glad you brought it up, Frank. That's a great idea.
I can't take credit for it. That was Marjess Vito, please. At the Open Space Committee meeting, she gets full credit for that.
But I will do a shout-out, because I used to have Open Space. It's a great group.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Number Three, authorizes notice of public hearing to establish fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar years 2020 and 2021, and ratify and confirm fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar years 2018 and 2019. Number Four, appoints official newspaper for the town of Riverhead. Number Five, authorizes the supervisor to execute a musical works license agreement with SESAC LLC. Number Six, authorizes publication of deferral notice for PFOS, PFOA, Riverhead Water District. Number Seven, encumbers funds from 2020 for HVAC professional services agreement.
Was this for our heater bill? Was this for the heating in here? Was this for the heating in here?
It is.
Because I noticed that we have heat and we don't hear a loud banging noise, so I think it worked.
We have heat, but we're not having a beach party.
It's actually hot in here.
It's not 85 degrees.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Number Eight, authorizes retention of Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna LLP regarding amicus curae in the matter of town of Southampton and others versus Town, versus New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and others, case number 532083.
And I'm going to say that I'm glad we're joining with Southampton and East Hampton on this.
Number Nine, reappoints Audrey Zaweski to the Board of Ethics. Number Ten, reappoints John Lombardi to the Board of Ethics. Number Eleven, reappoints Donna Bernard to the Board of Ethics.
All three of these people have done a good job.
Number Twelve, authorizes notice to bidders test well program Phase Two, installation of groundwater test wells, capital project number four, RDWD 1804, Riverhead Water District. Number Thirteen, authorizes the supervisor to execute a Fifth Amendment agreement authorizing the town to accept funds from Suffolk County Office for the Aging for the purpose of supplementing the town's nutrition program for the elderly. Number Fourteen, authorizes license agreement with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk County for installation of Fish Passage Camera at Grand Javel Park. Number Fifteen, authorizes the Community Development Department to apply for a New York State DEC/CSA environmental planning grant for the Riverhead Sewer District's Bio-Solids Reuse Project. Number Sixteen, authorizes the Community Development Department to apply for a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a Green Innovation Grant for a Bio-Solids Reuse Project. Number Seventeen, classifies an application for a grant pursuant to SECRE.
I didn't see what this is.
Yeah, seventeen and eighteen are blank, and Dawn is going to pop in and just explain further as to why. She was, my understanding, and she's waiting on language, I'm not sure if it's from EFC or who it's from, but waiting on language with regards to those SECRE components.
Maybe EFC. Okay.
So, maybe we can grab Dawn, somebody, maybe we can grab her. Number Nineteen, annual review and adoption of procurement policy. Number Twenty, sets salaries for 2021 call-in personnel for the Riverhead Recreation Department. Number Twenty-One, sets salaries for 2021 seasonal beach personnel for the Riverhead Recreation Department. Number Twenty-Two, appoints a call-in recreation leader to the Recreation Department. Number Twenty-Three, appoints a call-in assistant recreation leader to the Recreation Department. And Number Twenty-Four, appoints a part-time clerk to the Riverhead Recreation Department. And I think Dawn will just probably pop right in to just chat quickly about Number Seventeen and Eighteen.
Okay. I have one thing I wanted to ask about while we're waiting for Dawn. It just prompted me of it, went for the Office of the Elderly. There was an article yesterday about a couple of kids, I think, that are helping some of the elderly people sign up for the COVID vaccine. And it made me think about how, you know, there are a lot of people that don't, that have trouble with technology, and I think we ought to think, we ought to put together something or come up with some way to help some of the elderly people sign up to get the vaccine, because I know they're hard to get. And I imagine that a lot of the people are having trouble with the technology of it. So, maybe we can figure out something, some way to help the elderly people in our community with that.
I was just talking about this with a friend of mine. And the expectation that everybody can be first is just not realistic.
I know.
So, it's kind of, it kind of has to take its course, but I agree with you that the certain aspects of our community will need help to get this done. But the expectation that we're all going to get it on the first day is not really realistic.
Yes, unfortunately.
We have to be patient, but certainly, we need, you know, the compromised people of age, we need to help them. I agree.
Yeah, thanks, Frank. It's just that, I mean, I know, I know a lot of the teachers, of course, I know so much of the teaching community. I've had so much trouble getting signed up and some people are up until 3:00 in the morning trying to get signed up. And I'm thinking, well, if these people are having trouble, some of the people that aren't tech-savvy must really be having a hard time, and they're people that need to get, definitely need to get the vaccine.
Yes, and as soon as the vaccine is available, they opened up the Riverhead location, they, it's the Suffolk County, excuse me, the Suffolk Community College on Route 51. It's totally operational. Yesterday, they started providing vaccines to certain individuals. And as soon as, they were mostly law enforcement and as, I believe, they have, they had 2,000 vaccines and we should be getting a pod this weekend. And as soon as we get the pod and we're told that it has been delivered to the location, we're going to be doing an outreach, and that's, that's a great idea, Catherine, and we're going to be following through. We also have our, one of our senior liaisons in our office and he's charged with that responsibility.
I was just going to ask. I was going to say the same thing.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and that's why he was brought on board, because he's...
Let's bring Jim in and make sure he's tech-savvy.
Oh, that's good to hear.
And we'll be reaching out to the, but we need the vaccines.
Yeah.
We know we have the location, but we, we, we need the vaccines. And from what I understand, they are going to become readily more available. So, once they're here, we will get notified. I'll let the whole board know. And then Jim has to jump into action and we'll reach out to the senior center and Catherine, you know, you can help us reach out, too.
I'd be happy to work on that. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be good. Perfect. Awesome.
Hi, Dawn.
Hi, Dawn. Want to come up?
Sure. You want to come here?
Good morning.
Here, there.
Either one. What do you comfortable with?
Either one.
Okay.
I know you had a question regarding the SECRE resolutions for the grant application. So, typically, with the grant application in this, for this resource, we have to do SECRE review, just like you do for anything else. I've been, H2M is our consultant on this grant application, because it's a technical Bio-Solids construction grant project. So, we, H2M is preparing the SECRE and we went back and forth and, so they're giving me the guts of the resolution. I put the two blanks in as a placeholder, just so that you knew they were coming. It's probably going to be an unlisted action and it's going to probably be a neg deck, because really, we're just applying for the funding and it's not, you know, it's an environmentally